It's six o'clock, we're going to call the meeting to order. Mary Ann is going to lead us in the pledge, followed by Allen, leading us in the invocation.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Allen.
Yeah, I thought that's what he said. I want to, you know, make pleadings to God that on this fifteenth anniversary of the nine eleven attack in New York that happened yesterday, that we take time to remember all the people that lost their lives and the families that are still suffering, and also our hearts go out to the first responders, the police, fire, and EMS, because when everybody else was running away from danger, they ran into the buildings to try to help people. And I just ask upon your guidance that we, as a city council, will make decisions that are for the overall good of Chavino Park, and to also keep our military safe, as they are exposed to conflicts around the globe, to protect us and others for our way of life. We ask to send your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Allen, I appreciate that. We normally don't have a prayer and invocation on our special meetings, but in recognition of September the eleventh, Allen thought that it was appropriate, and Allen, thank you very much for leading us in prayer. Item three, citizens to be heard, Mary Jane Smoot, if you could give your full name and your address.
I go by MJ Smoot, and I live at 101 Chavino Drive. And what I'd like to ask my council to do in regards to the budget is to get rid of slush funds and tax only enough to fund the items in the budget, not to collect excess taxes. I would really like to see more decisions based upon Chavino Park citizens, and maybe not so much businesses and development. So I appreciate your consideration and listening, thank you.
Thank you. Item number four, we'll start with you, Mike.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Bob?
Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Good evening, thanks for coming.
Welcome, everyone.
Brings us to item five on the agenda, item 5.1, public hearing, proposed annual operating and capital budgets fiscal year 2016-2017. Bill, if you would lead us in the public hearing section.
I'll just kind of summarize again, for everybody's knowledge, city manager proposed the proposed budget to city council on August 4th. We used a tax rate of .287742, which is the same as the last year's tax rate. The next week, city council held a special council meeting on August 11th, and voted to propose the tax rate equal to the 2016 effective tax rate of .294780. We had discussion on that, doesn't require us to retain that, that tax rate that was a figure effective rate there. This current budget, and I just passed out a hard copy of the current budget, retains the current tax rate that we're currently in, or the .287742 rate. And that's because as we've generated discussions in the workshops, there hasn't been an apparent need to increase the tax rate to the effective tax rate, and I've received no guidance from the city council that they wanted to, you know, raise the taxes, so we, city staff has just continued to propose that current tax rate. So, you've got a hard copy there, there were some changes made based upon the dialogue over the last few years. I would point out that Laura's added some historic general fund operating expenses by department pie charts, they're kind of handy, which kind of gives you a percentage of the budget that's allocated to the police and the fire, that can be found beginning on page 34. So those are brand-new charts that don't really affect the actual numbers associated with, but we're always trying to approve how we present our budget. The general fund revenues were increased by 7,500 based upon the council's intent to begin charging a 3% service fee for credit card users at the court and permit payments. That's, that'll be a subsequent agenda item in October, we have that one scheduled. City council total expenses were decreased overall by $150, and meeting supplies were reduced $500, and the citywide cleanup was increased by 350 to allow for two, two instances a year where we do recycling or shredding, that goes from there. Administrative department, it was a small increase of $290. Benefits citywide was increased by $45. These were just small line items, for example, the software for ENCODE in our computer systems increased by $192, so we've updated the budget to reflect these kinds of small activities. We received a letter from Bear County Tax Assessor increasing the rate they charge for $53, so that's included into our, this new budget. Public Works increased a total of $7,360, with slight changes in $821 in personnel category. We increased professional services for the painting of the remainder of City Hall. So, City Hall's been painted, I think everyone sees that. What was not painted because of the budget was the, the police canopy over there, as well as the stairwell leading up to, right over here on this side of the building, in the backside. Wasn't seen, but we want to go ahead and get that.
And the front of the police.
In the front of the police.
The awnings on this side in the front, they're not painted.
They're not painted?
No.
Okay. I may have to look at that again, but we did add that in there, we had the funds in for that. And, do we add that, Curtis? Awnings and the police?
Should have been in the first one.
Should have been in the first one, so we'll, we'll police that up, I mean, I'll, I'll look into that. I increased the sign allocation for the Chavino Creek signs by $1,000, just because I got an exact figure, and I want to make sure that, you know, I'm not coming to you for a budget amendment, because we have to compete that bid again, and I don't want to have to compete, come back for a budget amendment for a $400 or $500 change in amount of that. Other than that, there was water revenue funds were increased $4,000, again, based upon the intent to charge a 3% service fee for credit card users. That's, that's a summary, really, there's not a lot of major changes from when the city manager presented the budget to currently now. Obviously, the cover letter was changed, so the verbiage that says proposed budget, this is the draft final version, all the proposed language was taken out, and subject to any guidance that you get on this, this meeting here, we'll take and change it for the next meeting, but this would be the budget you were going to vote for on your September 19th, subject to your questions.
Okay. Do we have any citizens who would like to propose, pose, who would like to pose questions to the city manager concerning the budget process?
Mayor, if I could have the word of the time for the public hearing, if we're going to use the public hearing.
Okay, it is now 6:10, forgive me. Do we have any citizen comments or questions that they'd like to extend to the city manager? Okay, if there are no comments or questions, it's now 6:11, and we're going to close the public hearing section of this hearing. We're now going to item 5.2, discussion action compensation for city judge and prosecutor. Bill?
So, provided to you, last, last month, as, last meeting as well as this meeting, a comparison of the pay per month for the judge and the prosecutor currently, I don't believe we're under a contract with them, they've been serving the city for over 20 years, we paid them $600 a month, they hold court one day a week, one day a month. I can say that they, that's not all they do, because they are engaged with various citizens and, and actions throughout the month. You can see the comparison, most cities have between one and three meetings a month. The pay varies associated with, for example, Alamo Heights, they have two meetings per month, they pay their prosecutor $800, and their judge, $1,150. Bolverde has two meetings a month, they pay theirs $1,200 a month, and $1,500. Hollywood Park, you can see, I don't know if you've, if you've got all the figures in front of you, if you've had a chance to look at this. The judge, again, some of the numbers are 750, 650, 1,200, but some of those meetings are, are various. So I provided the data that you've asked for. This was all generated because there was a letter that came from the prosecutor on, to the mayor on behalf, just saying, hey, it's been a while since we've had a pay raise, since Mayor Martin was there, it's been a number of years, would you consider that? They did not ask for a specific amount, and so, I don't know if you have any further questions, you've had a chance to take a look at this.
Okay, has everybody had an opportunity to review the numbers? Allen?
Bill?
Let's, let's take a motion for, I think we'll just entertain a motion for discussion.
Oh, okay.
Do we have a motion to pursue discussion?
I'd like to hear a motion that we increase the judge and prosecutor to $1,000 a month.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, we have a second for discussion purposes only, and that means we're open for discussion, Allen.
Yeah, Bill, I was going to ask you a question.
I'm sorry, when I looked this over, I didn't see any recommendation, and just looking through ones that are comparable city size, you know, it seems like that would be a good place to put it, or open up the discussion, at a thousand a month, because he hasn't gotten a pay raise in, what, 10 years?
No, he got a pay raise like three or four years ago.
Oh, okay, I thought it was longer than that.
Since I've been on council, he got a raise.
Up, up to six?
Well, you know, almost park is 900 for each, and they do one session a month, I'll just, that's a data point. Kirby is 750 per the judge, and 500 for the prosecutor per, once a month. Hollywood Park, 650 for the judge, 500 for the prosecutor, once a month. Most of the other ones are twice or three times a month, and they have a comparable amount, something similar to that.
Mike?
I'd like to speak against the motion, for a couple of reasons. Number one, I've attended the judge's proceedings, they're long, and it's a self-inflicted wound. He rambles, he lectures, so if, if part of their complaint is the number of hours that they work, that, that's self-inflicted. Another one, another reason that I would speak against the motion is that their workload has been going down, not up. All you have to do is look at our court fees that are collected, you see they've been going down. And the third reason that I would speak against the motion is that if, if they think that they're so underpaid that, that they want to leave, there's, be a long line of folks that would jump at the opportunity to be both a municipal judge and a municipal prosecutor. So, I would speak against the motion, and won't offer a substitute at the moment until after the next vote.
Bob?
So I've analyzed these, and although we are not the lowest, we are right around the middle or the median, I think, you know, 900 being the highest, and if you look at the amount of work that they do, we might be slightly on the lower end, but I think we're in the ballpark. I would entertain a motion that, well, let me see, it's, let me, I think we have two issues. One is, if we have a, if we have a judge that we do not feel confident in, then that's a whole different issue. If we have a judge that we feel confident in, then I think we, in, in light of the spirit of the compensation study and the other things that we're doing for the rest of our employees, I think it's worth looking at, I'd entertain a motion that we move him up to 650.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion to amend, to, to change it from 650, from 600 to 650, and that is for each one of the positions?
Correct.
That is for each one of the positions, beginning in the October fiscal year. Okay. Okay, do we have any discussion? We have a motion to amend, Mike, I'm sorry.
I, I would speak against that motion to amend, for the same reason that I spoke against the main motion.
Okay, we will, do you want to allow that to supplant your, to?
Yes, yeah, I'm willing to do that.
Okay, so, are you making a motion to, to substitute the motion to amend for your motion? Or are we, do we want to vote on the motion to amend, and then vote on your motion second?
All of a sudden, I'm confused, there.
Okay, we'll vote, we'll vote on the motion to amend. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, the motion to amend passes, now we're going to vote on the motion to amend as amended, the motion as amended. Is there any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is your motion.
Can we, can we make this a little more clear?
This is, this is the motion to, at $650 a month, for the judge and the prosecutor, beginning October of 2016.
Correct, okay.
Okay.
I thought that's what we just voted on.
No, that was, we voted on the motion to amend, now we've amended the motion, now we're going to approve the motion.
Okay.
This is what we did last month, okay.
So, this is the motion?
This is the motion, this is the, now we're voting on the amended motion. Okay, all in favor of the amended motion at $650 a month, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The motion carries. Item 5.3, discussion action ordinance number O2016014, approving and adopting the budget for the city of Chavino Park, Texas, for the fiscal year ending October, beginning in October 1, 2016, and ending September 30, 2017, making appropriations for each fund and department, establishing a sinking fund for existing city financial obligations, providing for the levying and collection of a sufficient tax to pay the interest on, and on such sinking fund obligations, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing a savings clause and severability clause, and declaring an effective date, first reading. Bill?
So I've summarized that, there's your draft ordinance that's in there, the, you've got a hard copy of the, the budget, I don't really have anything further to summarize. I'm substituting your questions, I, we're prepared to answer them.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number O2016014.
So moved.
Allen has made a motion to approve the ordinance as provided, do we have a second?
Second.
Mike Simpson has seconded the motion, we're now open for discussion. Mike?
I would move that in the capital improvement replacement fund, fund category number 70, we delete the category municipal tract, that we transfer the $26,030 to fire department vehicles equipment capital improvement replacement, and further, I move that in the capital improvement replacement fund category, fund category 70, we delete the category undesignated, and we transfer the $39,179 to fire department vehicles equipment capital improvement replacement, both transfers to, to fund a future, future purchase of a replacement fire engine.
Okay, Xena, do you have that before you, would you read that back to us?
I move that in the capital improvement replacement fund, fund category 70, we delete the category municipal tract, that we transfer the $26,030 to fire department vehicles equipment capital improvement replacement. And further, I move that in the capital improvement replacement fund, fund category 70, we delete the category undesignated, that we transfer the $39,179 to fire department vehicles equipment capital improvement replacement, both transfers to fund a future purchase of a replacement fire engine.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second, we are now open for discussion, do we have any discussion? Mike?
We don't need these two slush funds, they only encourage the good idea, Fairy, to use the two categories for pet projects. We've already seen that when Alderman Mizel suggested using the municipal tract monies to help fund her veterans memorial. The only way to control government is to control how much money it has excess. I cannot vote to approve a budget that has potential slush funds in it, and collects more tax dollars than there are responsible plans to use those dollars. The undesignated money in our capital fund, according to the finance director, was money that she couldn't specifically apply to any other category after she'd done a complete audit of that fund category. So rather than having it undesignated, I think the only responsible thing to do is to designate it and the municipal tract capital improvement to fire, fire engine replacement, which admittedly is under, undercapitalized this year.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? Personally, Mike, please, I, I'm offended that you made those references to Vicki, she's a very fine person, she was a very long-serving member of our council, and that was unnecessary to malign her in any way, and, and I, I'm personally offended. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I was not maligning her, I was merely giving a historical example of that fund being used to, to, as a, what, kickstart a, a pet project, and that, that's all I did.
Okay.
Well, and let me correct that. She proposed that that money be fronted to start the program, but that the monies all be paid back, and everything on that project be paid for with money raised outside of the city coffers. But she's not here to defend herself, so.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on the motion?
So, I would like to ask our finance director, can you give me more, can you expand upon the undesignated fund for 39,000, and confirm what, Councilman Simpson?
What page is this on, anyway?
On page 108, you can see in 2010, 2011, which is several years, several years now, there was unreserved fund balance of 29,955, and I went back that far, there was, using the budget books, using what was there, and that's the same result I came up with. So we inherited it as undesignated. And then there was a small difference in 1112, and then it's been interest is what's, the interest is what's increased it slightly over the years. I couldn't come back to it.
Okay.
I mean, it, again, it came from the budget books prior years, so.
Okay, Bill, is there a reason for having the unreserved balance here, other than to adjust the balances? And is there a reason why this wasn't picked up in the adjustments that we made at the end of last year in January, the, the changes that we made in January to eliminate all of these?
No, I, you know, I don't know what previous councils did, whether they purposely designated and put some funds in that fund balance in an undesignated category. They certainly put funds in the municipal tract category. To answer your question, no, there is no, you know, there's no purpose that I see in keeping it in an undesignated category.
Okay. Bob?
So I would, I would support the part of the amendment with the undesignated funds to be put towards equipment that we might need in the future for the fire department, I have no problem with that. I think I'd like to entertain a motion that we do do that, I however do not support the, the municipal tract portion of that. I think we need to remember, and I think this is where municipal tract gets ill-defined, is the municipal tract is not just the property that, that sits behind us, that has caused some controversy in the city. The municipal tract is also all of the front of the building, all of the landscaping, it includes the entire part of the, of this municipal facility. So I think we have to, to be mindful that there are things that we've needed to do over time, whether it's, you know, tree trimming, whether it's beautification projects, whatever, and I think those are necessary to, to keep in, in, in the fold. So I would, I would support moving the third, the, the, the undesignated funds, and, and my motion would be to go ahead and, and support that, however, not the other.
Okay, so are you making a motion to substitute?
Yep.
The capital improvements replacement fund category fund 70, to delete the category undesignated, that we transfer the $39,179 to the fire department vehicles slash capital improvement slash replacement fund, both transfers, the transfer to fund a future purchase of a replacement fire engine. Is that what you're?
That is correct.
Okay, we have a motion to substitute, do we have a second on the motion to substitute?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second to substitute, Allen has seconded the motion. Okay, we're now open to discussion on the motion to substitute.
Questions?
Yes.
I'd like to know from Laura, how in the capital replacement fund, we, and where in the capital replacement fund, we are underfunded? Is there somewhere in there that we're underfunded? And if so, what areas?
I, I can tell you that with the capital replacement scheduled, again, it's not scientific, you, you have a year of, of a property that it was purchased, you have an, an estimated timeline that it goes forth, and then you have a, a total bill that's AMRized based upon the lifespan of each individual piece of property.
Yes.
So when we started this out in the initial workshops that staff did, the, the figure was somewhere around, to fully fund the capital replacement fund, somewhere around $300,000.
Right.
And what you have, and, and just roughly here, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it was 200 and something thousand that we have, that this budget funds into the capital replacement fund.
Right.
So, it's not catastrophic, because you just simply increase a portion of the amount that you pay in the next, in the out-years, so.
So, we have the funds designated by department, by the needs or requirements of what they want. And my question is, in the list of things that are needed, that we're saving for, is fire the only area that's underfunded? And if they, and are they underfunded?
Fire's only stretched out.
I, I guess, Michelle, one of the things that's going to happen is that this money will go in there, that we know that over an extended period of time, we have to fund for the replacement fire engine.
I understand that.
And that this will reduce the future funding.
I understand that also.
And that we're not, actually, we don't have any underfundings this year on money that we're short to fund any particular capital project for this year.
So we don't have to put it toward fire, because there isn't an underfunding in fire?
There not an underfunding, I believe, at any point that, that we're aware of.
I just want to clarify if there's some sort of underfunding where it is.
Well, there are a number of areas that you could say are underfunded.
Correct, and they are.
And, and we also know that, I mean, just being frank, that the next couple of years, we have a couple of ambulances that have to be funded, and in the fairly new future, a fire truck. So if you're looking at the biggest ticket items that have to be funded in the near future, it's going to go into fire. The police, again, the bigger ticket items in the police department are coming out of crime control prevention budget, there's some public works stuff that would need to be coming from there, a lot of the bigger items in there is in the water department, which is not the general fund.
Correct. So, that's still an answer to my question. In the capital replacement fund, have we, are we current with what we need to be collecting on the schedule, at, up to this year, with what we're putting in it? And if you're saying that we're putting in 270 and we need 300, then we're missing 30?
200, approximately 200, right, what's the number that we're putting in this year? The numbers that I remembered was about 300,000 was the original, if, if we laid it all out, but we only funded 200,000 of that into the capital replacement fund. So it's about 90 to 100,000, it's a delta.
Yeah, so some of the fire items, and we did this last budget, and during the budget amendment, the, the life may have been, on, a few of them are stretched an extra year, so that the month, excuse me, so that the yearly amount that we're setting aside is slightly less. So yes, if, if we put it towards fire, some of those items, we'd have to go back and tweak, I'd have to, I mean, because there's, you know, what is there, 20-plus items?
And so there's no needs in public works or anywhere else that are more current, that need the money in reserves?
Might be some. I could go back and tweak, you know, I'd have to open my spreadsheet and see what we've got, and talk to Brandon and see. But we've got, like, the backhoe, that's a possibility, that we need to do it sooner, and it would be those types of things. It's just that we did spread out, and we talked about that, you know.
Yes.
Now...
So, there is a need on both, in, in both areas, 'cause we did, in order to budget last year, or the year we're currently in, and then during the budget amendment, we only had so much money, we did tweak those years, which changed those. So, yes, there's a need in both areas.
So, I would propose we split the unrestricted, undesignated funds between public works and fire.
I have a question.
Yeah, Mary Ann?
Um, and I don't wanna get off track, it's, it's about, uh, the Muni tract. So, I don't know if y'all wanna address, finish addressing this, or move forward with my question.
Well, just to, just to say, i- if you split it, or if you put it in one area, then essentially, next year, we'll take a look at it, and you redefine it, so wherever you put money in here, in theory, you're gonna need less next year, and the amounts available are gonna be allocated proportionally across every capital item, if that makes sense. So, you can stick it anywhere, and it gives it a uptick in, in your savings account, so to speak, and then you'll need less next year, and so you, 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 you essentially will be able to, if you put it on fire this year, you'll have more next year you can allocate into the public works. If you split it half and half, then there'll be a little bit of difference. I mean, it's, in this case...
How much do we have in each fund for fire and public works?
Public works is, has a hundred and thirty thou, excuse me, sorry. Public works has a hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and forty set aside to, in beginning, as of the beginning of the new budget, and we're proposing to set aside another sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy-nine.
And fire?
And fire has current, it will be in, beginning the balance with a million two hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy, and the proposed budget puts an additional one hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and eight.
So, we have a lot more money, and we're, we're not underfunded.
And, and I will have to go back and work this sheet, whichever way we do it, so, if it all goes to fire, I'm gonna have to, unless you tell me just to the fire truck.
Okay, so, Bob, uh, do you want to reconsider where you're asking that the money be placed under your, your motion to substitute?
Well, I think, as Bill said, I, you know, my, my concern is it's undesigned, and I don't like that designation either, so I, I would like it to go to capital improvements, uh, however we do it. The other, the other option I'll throw out there is, we're talking about a fairly expensive, you know, SCADA system that we're looking at as well.
Different fund.
I know it's a water fund, so I guess we have to keep that separate, but there, there are expenses that, that we need to, you know, look at, and if it goes in one fund, and we designate it next year, then I'm okay. I don't like the designation of, of undesigned, and I agree with, with, uh, Mr. Simpson on that.
And, and Michelle.
So, I, I would be happy to keep it the way it is, and we can, you know, look at it, um, in the budget cycle.
Okay, so, so let me just clarify what you just said. You're saying that your motion, you're happy with your motion as you made it, to put it to the fire engine?
That's fine.
Okay, uh, Mike, do you have any more discussion on this?
Yes, sir. Um, I would point out that if you look on page one oh eight, the fire, uh, capital reserve is going down this year because of the transfers out, and so, um, it goes from a million two to a million one forty-nine, from a million two thirty-nine to a million one forty-nine. Uh, and then I have a question. What, um, has been identified that needs capital reserve in the municipal tract?
Staff has not identified anything.
Okay.
Okay, then, because of that, I would speak against the amount, the amendment, because there is no identified use of that money, um, in, in that category.
Okay. Did we have any further discussion?
That was just my question. Um, if, if you look at it with respect to the Muni tract, since two thousand eleven, we've had funds budgeted. Uh, since two thousand twelve, it's been twenty-six thousand thirty dollars every year. The only time I know that we use that, that money was when we did a feasibility study and a resident survey.
That came from general fund, fund balance.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right.
It, it was talked about, but then it did not implement.
Right. And so, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with trying to figure out why we just keep having this money there when it's not targeted for anything. I, I didn't understand, and help me if I'm wrong, that when we do landscaping, it doesn't come out of this fund.
When we did tree trimming and landscaping, it came in the general.
Okay.
But those are also maintenance, and they're capital, they're not capital improvement by nature.
Right, so, we've got this money just sitting there earmarked for Muni tract with no designation to use it for anything.
Okay. Does, is there any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion to substitute, the motion to substitute by Alderman Heinzelman is, I move that the capital improvement replacement fund, fund category seventy be deleted in category undesig-, uh, the category undesigned, that we transfer the thirty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars to fire department vehicles slash equipment improvement slash replacement, and transfer to fund a future purchase of a replacement fire engine. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries, which supersedes Mike's motion, which brings us to the main motion, further discussion on the main motion. Do we have any further discussion on the main motion?
Which is to approve the overall budget?
To over, to approve the overall budget and ordinance number, oh, twenty sixteen, zero fourteen, yes.
Point of order. Um, what we did was, we just substituted one motion for, for a motion. Now, we need to vote on that motion as the main motion.
The main motion is, the main motion is the ordinance as amended, uh, as amended by the supplemental motion. We have, we have amended the main motion.
Yes, sir. Procedurally, there was a motion to amend.
There was a motion to substitute.
No, sir, there was a motion to amend, that's what I gave.
Okay.
Mr. Heinzelman made a motion, a substitute motion. That substitute motion was approved. Now, that substitute motion becomes the motion to amend, and requires its own vote before we get to the, to the motion.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have a motion to amend. Um, Bob, your motion is, I move that the capital improvement replacement fund category seventy be deleted, uh, we, we delete the category undesigned, and we transfer the thirty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-nine to the fire department vehicles slash equipment improvement slash replacement, and transfer to fund a future purchase of a replacement fire engine. That is the motion. Uh, motion to amend is on the table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries, which brings us to the final motion. The ordinance number, oh, twenty sixteen, zero one four, approving and adopting a budget for the city of Chavino Park, Texas, for the fiscal year twenty-six, uh, beginning in October one, twenty sixteen, and ending September thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Uh, is there any further discussion?
And I just wanna clarify that this budget is based on the tax rate of point two-eight-seven-seven-four-two.
Yes. Mike?
Um, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Uh, the tax rate may be staying stable, but we are, in fact, increasing taxes two ways. Number one, the valuations went up eight to ten percent this year, unless you protested your, um, assessment. And number two, the M and O rate is, went up from twenty-six point, or, point twenty-six four oh six six to twenty-seven two-three-five-two. Uh, the INS went down, but that money just moved over to, to, uh, M and O, and in fact, in the INS, we've got in reserve there, the, the debt fund, we've got over a year's worth of debt service money that is excess to what we're planning on paying for principal and interest. Um, and all we did this year was, uh, go into thirty thousand some odd dollars to, to reduce that. So, um, I, I think there's room that we could, we could bring it down some more. The argument against it is that if you do that, it throws it in chaos, so that once you get through spending that excess, then you're gonna have to raise them again. Well, I, I see nothing wrong with us telling the citizens, we overtaxed you in the past, we're giving that money back, and in a couple of years, we're going to have to come back and raise the taxes again, so that we pull in exactly what we need to, to spend. But, um, the, that's my position, is that we, we are increasing the taxes, and we're doing so, um, with a specific intent to bring our, um, primarily to bring our pay, employee pay up to, to something that's, uh, equitable to the, to the other employees in the area. So, that's the reason why I'm gonna vote for this, even though there's an effective tax rate, uh, effective tax increase.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Uh, Bill, how much are we increasing the budget this year by to cover the compensation study and the benefits that is, that will flow from it, uh, to the employees? Approximately four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars? Is that about the right number?
It was three hundred and something thousand dollars.
For salaries. And then there's...
Three sixty-four.
And then there was the, the supplemental money that's gonna go in for the sixteen percent of pay, for the roughly sixteen percent of pay that goes in for retirement benefits for our staff, and then there was also a supplemental benefit associated with increases in healthcare and the like.
Aye.
And so, all of those numbers together come in to be around a...
No, the, the number I gave you was the total amount.
Oh, that's the fully noted one, okay. How much is our total, uh, year-over-year aborum tax increase?
The general fund.
General fund, two hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay, so, so, we're increasing our general fund expenditures by three hundred and sixty-plus-thousand, and our taxes are going up by two hundred and eighty thousand. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Approximately.
And, and as far as the citizens who are having tax increases, it's really the people who are under sixty-five, and who are not suffering from disabilities, that are, that will have those tax increases. It's the, it's the guys that are, you know, the, it's Michelle, and, uh, Mary Ann, and Bob, and me, that are having the tax increases in this group. The others are, I believe you're over sixty-five, Alan, right?
Way over.
Just barely, just barely. So, i- is that true, that the tax increase does not apply to all of our citizens, that, and we have a, what percentage of our population is over sixty-five?
Twenty-five point five.
Twenty-five point five. So, this is a, this is a leveling technique, as far as all of these people, because, now, if we were to lower the tax rate, the benefit for the twenty-five point five, would that mean that we could take their taxes back up at some future point to, so that we're just kinda borrowing from them this year, and next year, we're gonna take it all back? Or does that tax increase for the age sixty-five people stay in perpetuity?
They get, stay there.
It stays. The reduction.
But if they lower it, then their tax goes lower.
Their tax, if the person goes down, but then they never can go back up.
Yep.
You can, okay, so Laura, I believe, has just said that if you lower the taxes for the people that are age sixty-five, you can never go back up.
They're frozen.
So, that there is a permanent change that has a budgetary effect, not only this year, but in all the out-years as well. And one of the problems that we have, and, and it's a great problem to have, is that we've got older citizens who have really wonderful houses, but until they move in one way or another, that those houses remain on our tax rolls at a frozen number, and it means that the younger people will always pay the supplemental taxes that have to be paid to run the community. I- is that true or false, or is that kinda close? That Laura's nodding that that is true.
Tax, if you were frozen currently, not counting this year, but if you were frozen as of twenty fifteen, then you're not gonna go up, whatever this rate is. You, if we, if it goes down, you would go down. Anybody that freezes this year, whatever this rate is, and then so in the future, once you're frozen, you can never, it will never go up on you.
Okay.
So, depends on where they fell this year, as to...
Okay, thank you, Laura, for clarifying that. I wasn't exactly sure, but I wanted to confirm. Michelle?
The actual, uh, Chavino Park average increase was, uh, across the board was seven-point-two percent. The majority of that was in commercial, because we added over seventy-two million dollars to the tax rolls. Um, if you're, the average homeowner, um, that, home value in our city, according to B-CAD, is six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. That's an increase of forty-one dollars a year. And so, if you are less than that, obviously, your increase is less. If you're more, it's more.
Yeah, and, and I know that we all sympathize with Mike, that we don't wanna collect any more than is necessary, but one of the things that, as a community, we have to remember is that we are approaching build-out. Uh, we had a wonderful presentation by Denton Communities, talking about all the great things that are happening in our community, but one of those great things is that eventually, we're going to have fully developed the remaining one hundred and twenty to one hundred and forty acres in our community, and then the only changes that we will see will be new commercial ventures, uh, replacing old commercial ventures that may generate sales tax revenues, and, uh, annual appreciation and homeowner values. And it is a very, um, it is a very risky tightrope that we, as a community, will walk in order to, to make it from here to fifteen years from now, without having to see tax increases be pushed down on our younger citizens. And I, I know that this isn't a perfect solution, and if we had another thousand acres of development, Mike, I think we'd all agree with you a hundred percent on the, on the process to pursue, but it's very, very difficult because of the finances that face our city. Bob?
I think, to a person, I think we would all be having a different conversation, and totally in, in support of what Mike's saying, if, uh, the compensation study, uh, did not occur, and the results that we've, we've, uh, undertaken, which, which has a significant impact on our budget this year, the only option would be to, uh, not pay that compensation package in this fiscal year, and in fact, move it out to, to the next year, and, and try to, uh, water it down somewhat. I don't think that's what we intend to do, I don't think that's what our employees deserve, and I think we need to do it the right way. But I think, to a person up here, if that, if that compensation study was not as significant as it was this year, it didn't go the way that it did, uh, I, I think lowering taxes would have been, uh, very appropriate, and I certainly would have supported that wholeheartedly, as I've done the last couple of years. But I think we have to be fiscally responsible, and I don't think we can say, we'll do, we'll do what makes sense short-term, and then we can raise taxes later. I don't think that's an appropriate way to go about it.
Okay, Mike?
Well, I appreciate the straw men that were just built. All I was saying is, I'm supporting the current budget, but let's be honest about what the numbers really say, and that, that is, that it's not a tax reduction, it's, it's a tax crease, increase.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any other discussion? If there's no further discussion, uh, we have a motion on the table. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
The motion, uh, three, four, four, and one against. Item five point four, discussion action, authorizing the city manager to extend and offer an employment for the position of police chief, possible executive session. Bill, uh, why don't you tell us about your candidate, and then if there is at some point in this discussion that the oper, the need to retreat to executive session, we can certainly entertain a motion to do that.
He's not here. Oh.
Well, he asked if I needed him here, and I said no, but, uh, hopefully I got that right. Anyway, uh, we received fourteen applications for police chief. Um, I brought in Chuck Pinto, who was a former police chief, and a former city manager, was our interim city manager here. Uh, Xena and I, and Chuck, screened the applicants, and we selected four for interview. Uh, we interviewed, uh, three of the four. One of them, um, had accepted another position the day before his scheduled interview. We made a unanimous choice between all three of us to select, uh, candidate Ray Lacy. Ray Lacy is assistant, uh, police chief, and Leon Valley now. Uh, Lay, Ray has thirty-three years of law enforcement service, of which twenty-five years are in police, uh, command or supervisory positions. He, uh, spent twenty-four years in the city of University Park, which is similar, um, but not exactly, but to Chavino Park, kind of a piece. He retired in TRMS after twenty-four years. Um, he... He was a Army Reserve MP for a number of years, and retired out of that as well. He has a number of law enforcement license, Master Peace Officer Certification, Advanced Instructor, Fire Arms Instructor, Mental Health Officer, Special Investigator, Certified Crime Prevention Specialist. Served a number of jobs in the University Park Police Position before becoming a lieutenant, served there, which is the number three position in the Police Department, served as the number three in charge for seventeen years before he retired. He has served as the assistant police chief in, first in the Goose Creek Independent School District for two and a half years, the Harris County Constable's Office for three years, and fifteen months as Leon Valley Assistant Police Chief. The last month, he has served as the interim police chief there. He is very well qualified, very articulate, he's got great experiences, he brings a community policing perspective, and to, to the, to the role, that's what his theme is here. I can tell you that we were all very impressed with his ability to communicate, his skill sets, his direction in which he would travel. I personally assess that he is a perfect candidate for the city of Chavino Park, and if I had to draw out what I wanted in a police chief and put it out, that I would, I would have created a resume and an experience base similar to Mr. Ray Lacy. I passed your resume there, I don't know what your questions are, so I'll pause, and I'll answer any of the questions you have.
Okay, do we have a motion to authorize the city manager to extend an offer of employment for the position of police chief to William Ray Lacy?
I would move that we delay this until we get a chance to meet him, like at the next meeting, council meeting.
Okay, I have a motion to postpone. Motion to postpone takes precedent over all other items, do I have a second on the motion to postpone?
Second.
I have a mo, I have a second on the motion to postpone, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
The motion carries, the, we have, we will postpone this. As a procedural matter, pardon?
Can we still have discussion?
No, we can't have any discussion on it. I would like to, Mike, if you would clarify the time that, for your motion to postpone to come out, what was that?
As soon as he can get here, where our next meeting is next week. We're more than seventy-two hours out, we can put it on the agenda.
Okay. I do wanna point out to the council members that on the motion to postpone, a motion to postpone is in, is held in suspense until the date that it is provided for it to come out. And the mo, the date that that is to come out is outside of ordinance reading, which provides that it would require to have been posted to the agenda as an agenda item, unless it's an emergency item, as of Monday of this last week. And so, we would not be able to consider it. However, I would entertain the consensus of council to include this as an agenda item on the next id, on the next agenda, on the September agenda, if that's okay.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I would propose that we call a special meeting and have him come and meet as soon as possible. I mean, we have, our police chief is transitioning out, in fact, he's on leave all next week, and he's moving. This is an important time for us. I mean, I have, I've hired the finance director, the two public works directors, no one's ever told me that that's been a requirement before, that you want to meet the candidates. The, the ordinance basically says that, that I receive council's consent, which I can, I can read that as approval.
Okay. I hear what you're saying, Bill, and I'm, today is Tuesday, today is Wednesday, which means that seventy-two, oh, shoot. Or, or we can put it on, I think what Bill is saying is he'd like to get him in here as soon as possible, which might be like Thursday. And I, with the consent of three council members or the mayor, we can call a special meeting of the city council. The question is, do we have, will we have four people available on Thursday?
It would have to be at seven, like, we'd have to do it right now, to do it as early as seven, right?
Or at seven-thirty, or on Friday.
Or on Friday.
We could do it Friday.
Yeah. I don't think we have enough time to post it.
I won't be here Thursday.
You're not here Thursday?
Friday.
Are you here Friday?
I don't know.
I can be here Friday.
Well, it sounds like we need to move quickly, and so, can, is, yeah, Mary Ann, can you make an effort to be here on Friday?
I, I can make an effort to be here Friday.
Okay. Then, I will entertain, I will request that three council members make a request for a Friday meeting of city council to, special meeting to meet, and to make a decision concerning our city manager. And that's, that is a procedural item. Which brings us to item six. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Alan's second in the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries.